I want to take this time to welcome you to City Hall. It's a little bit after six. Tonight is our May 6 meeting. Eric Strumpf, your mayor, and I hope you are having a good evening. We'll have our pledge of allegiance here in just a moment, and before that, we'll have a prayer led by Councilman Rick Prather.
I've been waiting my whole career for somebody to mention that. The meeting has not happened yet, so it's a pre-meeting. And in addition to that, as near as I can tell, the courts allow council members to make the prayer. What happened in many cases is that the council will invite, say, a preacher of a certain denomination to come in and say a prayer, and then a religious person of another denomination wants to come in, and the council said, "No, we're not going to let you." So at that point, you're cherry picking what religion you want to give. The councilmen are free to say whatever prayer they like, or no prayer at all. So that's the primary saving grace of this. And secondly, the meeting actually hasn't come to order yet.
I don't know if you can get a hatchet in City Hall or not. We'll try that. The prayer would be Mr. Rick Prather.
Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, we pray for our police, our firefighters, EMS, armed forces, and all those who risk their lives to protect our nation, the state of Missouri, and the city of Jefferson. Also, I'd like to pray for the new city council, that we may make sound decisions for the betterment of the city of Jefferson. In your name, we pray.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask the clerk to please call roll.
Branch.
Here.
Bray. Carroll. Here. Graham.
Present.
Henry.
Here.
Hussey.
Here.
Mahalovitch.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schulte.
Here.
Scrivner.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Next, we do not have a public hearing this evening. Minutes and reports filed here at City Hall speak for themselves underneath number seven. If you'd like to join one of our boards or commissions, you can do so by contacting Gail Strope, which, early birthday to Gail tomorrow. And you could do that at our website, which is jeffcitymo.org, or you could call 634-6410. Next, we'll have council committee reports. And first of all, the admin committee is chaired by Carrie Carroll. Carrie?
Thank you. At the last administration committee meeting, we discussed the sidewalk café ordinance, and that will come back on the agenda at our next meeting, because we've invited the restaurants that currently have a sidewalk café to make input. They've already been to admin once before, but we made some changes, so we'd like them to come back and have further discussion with the restaurants that would be affected by it, so we can make a good decision on those changes. We also discussed the residency requirement, which you'll see on our agenda tonight, and changes in a building service worker from, to police maintenance worker was also discussed. And our next meeting will be June 5. And Gail, I wondered when it would be appropriate, since there is no bill on the table about changing the building services worker to police maintenance, but I know that the gentleman that we talked about, it's kind of unusual circumstance to have somebody that does such a great job on staff, and he's really gone out of his way, so I don't know if you wanted to, if we should mention his name, or just give him a quick recognition, or when that might be appropriate. Maybe at a future meeting, we could always have him here to mention, but he's always, from what you presented, gone out of his way.
Yes, Carrie, thank you. The ordinance that we discussed will be, is slated for the next council agenda, so you'll see the ordinance in two weeks. And the employee that you're referring to is Ronnie Bates, and he has been our, basically our custodian at City Hall for the last 12, 15 years, and has done just an absolutely outstanding job. And he did retire last week, so.
Thank you. And that's right, there will be an ordinance, so he would be recognized. I wanted to make sure he got the proper recognition for his service, so thank you, Gail. And our next meeting is June 5. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Carrie. Moving on to the finance committee, who's chaired by Mr. Sean Schulte. Sean?
Thank you, Mayor. The finance committee met Wednesday, April the 24th. We shared the sales tax number with the council at the last council meeting. We did discuss an economic development policy that was presented by staff. The committee is combing through that policy over the next month, and the intention is to bring that then to the work session in June for the full council to look at and to discuss on an economic development policy. We also discussed the three resolutions that appear on the agenda for this evening. Our next meeting is May the 28th at 7:30 a.m. across the hall. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sean. Moving on to public safety committee, which is chaired by Mr. Rick Prather.
We held our last meeting last Thursday, May 2nd, and among the topics that we discussed, the new SWAT vehicle, drug enforcement, an update on the heroin issue, and also change in minimum fines being assessed by our courts. Our next meeting is to be held May 30th after the Brown Bagel.
Thank you, Rick. Moving on to public works and planning committee, who's chaired by Councilman Bob Scrivner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works and Planning Committee has not met since our original organizational meeting, what, two weeks ago, I guess? But our next meeting will be, is scheduled, the committee is scheduled for May the 23rd. We don't have an agenda prepared yet, but we would expect to have debate about, or a presentation, I guess, about the transit situation, so.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Any liaison reports this evening? Moving on to appointments by the mayor. First of all, we have a council standing committee, which is a public works and planning committee. Those members would be Mr. Bray, Mr. Branch, Ms. Carroll, Schulte, and Scrivner. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
It's been moved.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Next, we'll move on to B. These are appointments to our boards and commissions. I think they also speak for themselves. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Next, we'll move into number 10, which is presentations from staff, consulted consultants, and invited guests. And tonight, Nathan has some city goals that he's going to share with us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council had asked me to come up with some goals for the city, and I want to kind of tell you about how I walked through this process, and where I think we need to go with this process. So a little, sort of, an intro to goal setting. The first thing is you have to start off with is what's your vision? And that is to say, where do we see Jefferson City? Then you work down through objectives, goals, and tasks. Go ahead and switch the slide. Vision is simply a question of what the city will look like, what we think ideally the city would look like at some point in the future. And then, this is created by the city council interacting with the staff and the community is really how this should be come up with. In this case, the vision was, came up with, by me, interacting with just the staff. So really, to have a really true vision statement, it needs to be a much broader process. But this kind of gives you an example of what it might look like. And this is the vision that I came up with. I'll just read it, because it's very short. Jefferson City will be a dynamic city with efficient and effective city government, a city which upholds its cultural legacy, enriches its residents, with a safe, positive, and beautiful, and healthy place to live and work and grow, welcomes visitors, and builds towards a strong, vibrant future. Now, if all you do is just the vision statement, then you really have just kind of a platitude, so it doesn't really mean much. So the way that you make the vision statement come true is by working through the goals and the objectives and the tasks. If we go to the next slide, the main part of that is objectives and goals, and it's kind of what the difference between them is, is objectives are really your long-term steps. That is, you're looking out in the five to 10-year range, say, if your vision is 20 years out. Well, as the goals, or the short-term goals, are more immediate kind of objectives. And just move on. Yeah. This is an example, just the council already has my vision statement and goals, and I just wanted to kind of show you, rather than going through every goal that we have listed out, because obviously, we are a city, we have 424 employees, and we have actually more functions that we provide than that. So when you look at goals, it's kind of a lengthy, lengthy thing. But just kind of to show you, one of the things was create a positive city. So in order to create a positive city, we want to encourage diversity. And one of the ways, then, that we would encourage diversity would be to welcome and include non-native residents. It's kind of one of my pet peeves, you've all talked to me before, we have kind of a tradition in Jefferson City of asking people, you know, "Were you born here?" Sitting here, watching the council meetings for low these many years, if you watch people who come up the podium, the first thing everybody says is one of two statements. Either they'll say, you know, "My name is John Smith, and I am a native of Jefferson City," or they'll say, "My name is John Smith, and I'm not a native of Jefferson City, but I've lived here 30 years." As if, in the second case, they're apologizing for not having been born here. And it's very off-putting to people who are not from here. And the fact of the matter is, if you look at the demographics, there are now more people in Jefferson City who were not born here than people who were born here. And so we need to be more welcoming. So just something simple like that, or another goal is create statements of tolerance, you know, something that we've never really done. Now, I'm not saying that these are our goals, or necessarily that these should be the goals, because it's really the council's prerogative to decide those goals. But you asked me to come up with some examples of what goals might look like, and this is kind of how it's done, and what they might look like. If you go to the next slide, just as another example, in kind of a different field, provide a safe city. Well, I think that's the vision that we all certainly have for the city. And how do we provide a safe city? Well, one of the ways to provide a safe city is to reduce the crime rate. I think that's an objective that we'd all go for. It's a measurable objective, and something that's very concrete. And we've set out, for example, two goals here. One would be to develop and promote effective prevention of crime programs, and the other is to increase arrest tolerance rate. Both of those would contribute towards reducing the crime rate, which in turn would provide, contribute toward providing a safer city. So you kind of see how it works up the chart and works down the chart. You can go to the next slide, and I'm just kind of going over briefly. The last step is tasks, and I didn't include tasks in my goals, because tasks are really very minor things. They're how we, you know, accomplish the goals. And they're really the simplest levels, and beneath really where the council ought to be looking. They generally are self-contained kind of, kind of things. So a task might be, if you look at the last example, where we're looking at creating crime prevention programs, the chief might task one of his employees with coming up with a new residential crime prevention program. Well, that's how the chief would accomplish that objective, and thereby accomplish the council's goal, and reach the, reach the vision. But it's really more of something that the chief would do than that the council would set out how this stuff is done. You're really getting into the mechanics of things, then. And so, in this case, generally, those are done at the department level. And then finally, shaping the vision, kind of a where do we go from here? As I said, you know, I think that the goals that I've set out are good. I'm very proud of them, but they're not, I don't want to misrepresent them. I don't want to represent these as being the city's goals. They are not. This is my vision. If I was dictator of Jefferson City, which I am very clearly not, this is the goals that I would set up for Jefferson City. Of course, if I was dictator, I wouldn't really need any goals, I'd just tell you all what to do. But it really needs to be a process between the three groups, which is the community input, the staff input, because obviously, the staff has a lot to contribute to this, and then ultimately, the council decides what those goals, that that vision is. And how can we get there? Well, I think what we need to do is to kind of begin that process. And it's a, I will just tell you upfront, it's a fairly lengthy process. Our sister city, the North, Columbia, just went through it. They came up with some very good results. They're probably not the same results we would come up with, but they were good for them. But it was a multi-year project that they worked on. We can certainly try and do it in much less time than that, but the process has to include a lot of debate by the council, a lot of input by a lot of people, so that we really kind of create that vision that has buy-in from everybody. If you can create the vision, then you really can have success, especially if you can create a vision that has buy-in. It's interesting, you'll notice earlier, and I quoted from the Bible, where it says, "Without vision, the people will perish." It's an interesting quotation, because that exact same quotation also appears in Confucius, exactly the same, where there is no vision, the people perish. And so I think that that kind of shows you that even our ancestors understood, you've got to have this kind of vision to move forward. And, you know, that is, I think, one of the issues that we really need to address. It's one of the things that I know you all, as council people, have brought up to me over and over and over, is that we don't have a clear vision. So we need to start that process. I am prepared to assist you with that process. This is not something that is rocket science. Many, 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 many other cities have done this. Many other organizations have done this. I can help you walk through the process. That's what I do. I just need you all to say, that's the direction we want to start moving. Not asking for any kind of decisions tonight, just something to kind of think about as I present my goals. So you have my goals, and you have my thoughts on them. I'll answer any questions you guys have.
Any questions, Nathan, so far? Nathan, thanks for bringing these forward, I think. Go ahead, Mr. Graham.
Mr. Nicholas, first of all, thank you for this vision statement and goals. And I truly agree with you. I think that the visions for this city, and the goals for this city, should be set by this council and the mayor. The strategic plan to reach those goals should be done by you and your staff. So I totally agree with you on that. So I hope that we, as a council, can set the vision statement for this city and the goals. And then, you'd be required to do the strategic plan as relates to how we reach those goals. I totally agree with you on that.
Thank you. Rick Mahalovitch.
To echo Councilman Graham's comments, I do too appreciate that. And I think he's got it right, and you got it right. I'd like to see measurement as a part of your overall staff assignment, as you develop how you're going to do it. I'd like to know how we measure our progress towards them.
Anyone else over here? All right. Nathan, thank you for doing that. I know that was a goal the council had for you earlier this year. And I think in the past, you know, we've looked at retreats and other ways to try to flush things out as far as what our vision could be, but look forward to working with not just the public, but staff, and everyone on the council, and yourself, to get that done here in the next, at least start that process in the next few months. I think in this case, you'll agree that where you want to end up is just as important as where you start, and having that timeline as you go through things. So thank you very much. Let's see here. Next, I have on the number 11, any announcements by council and staff this evening. As the mayor, I do have one quick announcement. There was a large group that was supposed to be here over the weekend, but due to rain, they've rescheduled their events, and that's the Capital City Corvette Classic. You can go to their website and look up all their information. I believe it's Friday afternoon, Friday night, and then Saturday at the Capitol. Anything else under number 11? Under number 12, as we stated earlier, we have several people here from transit and 2014 budget. I would like to allow you guys each, three minutes each. Please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. And I have on here first, Mr. Paul Van Horn.
I will be heard, carrying some of the other people.
Oh, okay. So you're off the list, then? Okay. Vicki Schilmeier, Schilde Meyer, sorry. I'm pretty German, but I just don't know that particular one. Vicki, thank you so much for being here tonight.
The reason, the reason I came to speak to you, oh, Vicki Schilmeier, 1803 Tanner Bridge Road, Jeff City, 65101. The reason I came to speak to you is on behalf of a lot of other people who aren't able to be here, because there's no transit at this time of the evening. I have a friend who's in a wheelchair, and she uses Handy Wheels to go to the doctor and the mass transit to go about town to her job, part-time job at the Salvation Army. She is just one person of many who depend upon the existing transit system, and if the system and services were expanded, would be able to engage more in everyday life, and her job, and purchasing around Jefferson City. Her name is Sarah. I also went to the open houses across the hallway and listened to people's story. There are a lot of people who need this service. I went out to the mall to the senior lunch site, and it amazed me how many people came up and said, "Oh, do you have any more of the signature cards that I could sign? I really want people to know that I need this service." And I used up all the ones I had and went back with more. But I'm just telling you, there's broad-based support for this, because in any one moment, any of us who now can drive, because we can see, or we can afford a car, might not be able to see well enough to drive, we might not be able to afford a car in the future. Thank you.
Vicki, thank you very much for being here. Next, any questions for Vicki? Okay, moving on. Thank you very much. Next, I have Ms. Sue Gibson.
My name is Susan Gibson. I live at 310 Berry Street in 65109. I want to point out that the overwhelming majority of transit users work within smaller budgets than any of you, and it's not up to us to pay for your inability to work within the city's budget. Picking on the disenfranchised is so very familiar, the words Nuremberg laws come to mind. I'm going to make a few marks, remarks about midday service, just in case y'all get the wild idea of cutting that out again. If you cut out midday service and give us two short windows in which to get our errands done, we will have no control over how quickly we can get through a grocery line, or how efficiently our medical providers can see us, if they're slowed down on a particular day. Many of us are old, sick, or both, and we're all tired. Some are rushing to get to work, and the threat of being stuck someplace while the buses don't run, perhaps with bags of groceries that include perishables, is not only daunting, but terrifying to some. Stop terrorizing us with these threats of insecurity. If the mayor's scheme were to go into effect, we would have no way to predict when we'll get where we're going, or when we'll get home. We will wait with our frozen food purchases thawing, or we will call for transportation before getting into the grocery line to try to avoid the wait, and something will happen to delay us, and will hold everyone up. With door-to-door service, the buses will have more wear and tear from making additional turns and having to brake more, and some streets cannot accommodate a bus if there is parked car on each side. Some people will not understand why one gets picked up at their door and another does not. And by the way, Columbia's Transit Authority has a marketing specialist, which I've been asking for, for 10 years.
Any questions for Ms. Gibson? All right. Next, we have Mr. Wayne Lee.
I have for you copies of my testimony, written testimony, but unfortunately, nine of those, I'll give you this one when I'm finished. When you stop and think about it, do we really need any public service? The police, when there's nobody robbing your home, or causing any problems? Fire department, when your house isn't burning down? Well, when you think about it, not then you don't, but you do eventually. If your house does catch on fire, or if a thief does rob you, you're going to need them. And you never know what they're doing behind the scenes. They're doing something all the time. The same can be said for the public service transit. You may not need it right now, but one of these days, you just might. You may not have that ability to drive. You may not be able to even walk one of these days. You may need transit. There's all kinds of things you've heard from me before, and you've heard from others, and you're going to hear from others still. What we need right now is a transit commission. And we can do that together. Those of us who are interested in seeing that, and those of us who want to see that, and who have been working on that, and are still working on it, and you, the city council, you can do that. We can do that together. And that's the way it has to be. We work together. We can get it accomplished. And I believe you will work with us if you decide to. That's your option, your choice. You can decide to work with us, or you can decide not to. That's your option. But I think you have the option, and you can make the choice, and I believe you will, if you really want to get something done, and you want to see this city grow. Because with a convention center, people will go ahead and move their conventions here if they have a transit system that actually operates and functions. They're more likely to, anyway. And businesses, they're very, very effective, and they're more willing to go ahead and do something. They'll be helpful to us, and you can see it in my written testimony. My time's up, I know, so.
Any questions for Mr. Lee tonight? Wayne, I want to thank you for being here again. Thanks for all your help so far.
Thank you for hearing me.
Okay. Go ahead.
By the way, I have this on my computer.
Okay. Thank you. Next, I have Ms. Heidi Lucas. Hi, Heidi, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Just fine.
I brought testimony as well. I brought a whole packet of information. Just put those right there, thank you. So tonight, I am here representing Citizens for JeffTran, Central Missouri Community Action, and Jefferson City Congregations Uniting. We decided to show up tonight, the evening of the original transit hearing, to further comment on the transit situation here in Jefferson City. We again want to thank you for restoring funding to JeffTran in order to avoid the three-hour cut in service in the middle of the day. Since the announcement of the cuts, Citizens for JeffTran has formed and collected almost 700 signatures of citizens who wish to see Jefferson City transit system be the best it can be. And I want to present those to you this evening, so. Two very large stacks here of signatures that we have received from people throughout the city, so we would love you to have those, that list of names. As you begin work-
Heidi, I'll ask the clerk if she could to scan those and send them to all the council members, and also to the press, and whoever else might like them.
That'd be-
Save you from copying them, and we have to scan them anyway, so.
Excellent. So yeah, they're here for you. As you begin work on the 2014 budget, we hope that you will remember that among, those among us who count on the bus to get where they need to go, be it to work, to school, to socialize with friends, or to spend money in local businesses. I've included in my testimony some data that was collected during the 2006 Transit Development Plan. It will show you the characteristics of the passengers, as well as some of the other major findings. So that's on the, starting on the third page there. You'll see that only 25% of those surveyed had a car or other vehicle that could have been used to make their trip. 51% of those used public transit to get to work. 21% of those surveys were under the age of 25. 16 were under the age of 55, or, excuse me, were 55 or older. And more than 60% of those surveyed had an annual income under $20,000, and 22% had an annual income over $75,000. 52% of those surveys indicated that they used public transportation in Jefferson City at least five days per week. As you can see, there's a lot of varied constituents that use the bus service in Jefferson City. We hope that you'll, we can find a new way to increase transit service, to better serve those who ride, as well as find a way to attract new riders to use JeffTran. To this end, this evening, we would like to encourage the council to form a public transit advisory commission. As such, we are presenting a list of stakeholders who are interested in serving on a public, on the commission. These are people who we have spoken to, and who are interested in serving on. These stakeholders represent various community members, including the director of the Cole County Health Department, the director of the library, members of the business community, disability advocates, social services agencies, Handy Wheels, and regular route riders, as well as other interested community members. The hope is that this group will continue to make recommendations based on the 2006 Transit Development Plan and move towards implementation. We want the transit system in Jefferson City to be the best that it can be, and we want to work on a plan to increase- the best that it can be, and we want to work on a plan to increase ridership. Thank you very much for your time.
Heidi, thank you once again. I was, it was nice to talk to you before this and I know we tried to touch base this afternoon. Uh, any questions of Heidi, uh, this evening? All right, Heidi, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Uh, next I have on the agenda, Mr. Brian We Camp. Good evening, Brian, and welcome.
Thank you, Your Honor, um, members of the council. Brian We Camp, 1125 London Court, Jefferson City, 65109. I know a lot has already been said about, um, Jeff Tran and Handy Wheels, so I won't repeat it, but I just want to thank the council for restoring the funding, um, that was proposed to be cut for the, um, transit service and just want to encourage, um, as the budget is going to be worked on the next several months to remember how vital it is for a lot of people in Jefferson City. I know myself and many, many other people use the transit service and it is a daily part of our lives and a very vital service to us. And we, um, just want to let you all know and thank you for putting the money back in and letting you know that it is important to us. Thank you.
Brian, thank you for being here. Any questions for Mr. We Camp? Brian, once again, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else under number 12 this evening? On, on, on transit, yes ma'am. Is there anyone else besides, uh, this ma'am here?
Hi, I'm Helen Rigdon. I'm the director of the Public Library. And I live, I live outside of Jeff City, but we, uh, work with many of the people that use the transit service every day. First, I want to thank the council for listening to us at the hearings and putting the money back in so that the operations can continue in the middle of the day. But the service is very important for the people that use the library. They come to the library not just for entertainment, but also to broaden their knowledge. They use the internet. Many times, e-government has to be done online. So if they have to do their taxes or fill out a form for social security, they have to come to the library because they don't have internet at home. So without that service, there would be no way for them to get into the library to complete a lot of their necessary, uh, tasks that they must do to live. So once again, um, we'd like to encourage you to get a council, uh, on the transportation and, uh, so we can move this forward and continue to be the progressive city that Jefferson City is. Thank you.
All right, thank you Helen. Anyone else on number 12? Mr. Groner.
I'm Richard Groner, 425 Cedar Creek Court, 65101. Um, this is an offshoot of some of the things that are happening here. I want to congratulate the News Tribune for finally becoming a research department and starting to pay attention to what's happening. And the stuff that I'm giving you tonight has picked up from them. It's not my original research. Normally I do my own, but in this case I didn't. And there was an article in the paper some time ago about some of the things that have happened. And it appears to me that in 2011, the city council, after the budget was made, expended about $900 to a million dollars in excess money. Uh, and it would appear to me that, uh, if you would do what the budget says or something, you wouldn't have spent that money and we wouldn't be here arguing about whether the transit should have $50,000 taken away from them. So what I would say is, I think you owe it to us to have a better budget process and not expend a million dollars that wasn't budgeted. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Groner? All right, thank you Dick for being here. Okay, moving on, we have, um, under number 13, Consent Agenda, uh, minutes, uh, of the April 11th and April 15th meetings. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to approve. It's been moved in second. Uh, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion passes. No bids denied over $50,000, so we'll go into first reading of bills introduced.
Mayor, could I ask?
Yes ma'am.
I know we did the presentations and I believe, isn't our response to the presentations, is it, at the end of the meeting, could we do a quick response to some of the presentations?
Uh, would that be okay with the rest of the council?
Yeah.
Yes, by all means. Carrie, go ahead.
I wanted to mention-
We'll move right in, we'll move right into number 19.
Thank you. Wanted to mention that, uh, I did receive an email from Heidi. Thank you for sending that today. Um, since I serve on Public Works and Planning, I know that's, this is going to be coming to that next agenda, uh, on that meeting. And the idea of a Public Transit Advisory Commission will come up. And since it came up through Heidi and some of the other pre- presenters, I wanted to just give a brief, um, or maybe Drew could tell us briefly how that would be formed. I know I've sat on the Arts Commission when that group was formed and there are some, uh, great suggestions here. And, and I know at the, uh, the previous council voted on the resolution that would form something like a Public Transit Advisory Commission, but that way the group doesn't leave not thinking that we are going to form such, but that in detail, we'll be talking at the Public Works and Planning meeting, which I think was maybe the 24th at the end of this month. So Drew, uh, what are, could you just give us a brief overview of the steps that would be taken to form this commission?
I'm gonna sit back 'cause the truck keeps yelling at me for talking too close to the mic, so if you can't hear me, tell me. But, uh, it depends on what the council decides to do. Someone, a typical committee is formed, uh, we bring a bill, you would determine what the, what the purpose of the committee is, that would be put in, in the bill. And then the membership, those are the two kind of hot topic or things that vary in the process. Uh, everything else is fairly well the same. You know, they meet to cer- they meet at least a certain purpose and report to the council and, and this and that. But it depends on what the council, uh, either, either a member or the committee or, or the commission decide on purpose and then, uh, number. And that can certainly come to, uh, Public Works when, is, as long as one person wants to sponsor it, I guess.
Thank you Drew for that background. And, and I want to thank the group for coming up with such a great outline. I know Heidi's outline is very specific and helpful and really the only thing I could think of to add would be representative from schools because I know there's the Tripper Route and there's been a lot of discussion about that as well. So I think you've done a lot of groundwork for this committee and the council can discuss then at Public Works. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Bob, do you have any comments?
Um, not really. Uh, we're prepared, we're gonna be prepared to, uh, discuss this issue.
Okay.
And, uh, I'm not sure that, that, um, it was in my thought process that we would be prepared to do a, talk about a commission as far as forming a commission at that meeting. Uh, I think, uh, our resolution calls for, um, taking a look at the issue and, and trying to get the group together and decide what the vision of the, uh, transit system would be. And I think, uh, that it, in the process, that commission will probably become a reality. But I, I don't think that the next meeting is, is, uh, when that'll be done.
I think, uh, just, just for the public, Bob and I have talked quite a bit about this, uh, since he's the chair of, uh, of Public Works. I think the, the key is, is, as we've said before, is that getting you the stakeholders and end-users involved really is the key. Because if we have a lot of people on there that, that, that don't ride our current transit system or don't know anything about it, uh, your needs and wants are important. However, as I told Heidi before the meeting and to quote our fire chief, or, excuse me, our police chief, sorry, that, uh, uh, some days, there's, there's only so much money on that tree. Uh, so what we will try to do, I promise you as the mayor and as the council, is work as diligently as we can to provide you with the best transit service possible. And that could mean simply revamping it to making it a, a better product, if you think that's a better product. So, I think that's what Bob's trying to say. And I think that's really kind of what we all want to do here, but we appreciate you being here, Bob.
Yeah, I think, I think the whole idea of, of trying to get people together is to try to find out what the vision for the system is. You know, we had a report that was done, uh, in 2006 and, uh, that report really has never been enacted. And I think one of the reasons that it hasn't been, uh, obviously finance is one of the reasons, but also I'm not sure that, that, uh, there's really been buy-in from everyone in the community, uh, as to exactly what our transit system should be. And, uh, I think that the, the process that we hope to go through is to try to, to come to consensus among, uh, the advocates for the system as well as for the, for, uh, people who are skeptical about the system and to bring that, those groups together and, uh, and, uh, try to come to consensus exactly what the system should, should be and what it should look like and, and, uh, how it, uh, a plan how to get there and, and a plan for how to, uh, fund it.
And, and Matt Marash, I think you'll agree, as we were talking before the meeting and Janice even four years ago when I first got on the council, I know a lot of us have had this discussion, that a lot of communities have, have drastically trained, uh, changed their transit system for the better for the end-users by ju- by simply just offering different routes, different systems, all the above. So I think we want to look at everything that's on the table. Any other comments tonight, uh, on this issue? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into Bills Introduced, which is first reading of our bills. And we'll start off with first reading of Bill 2013 dash six.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Cole County, setting procedures for joint city and county capital improvement sales tax projects.
Mr. Matt.
Thank you, Mayor. The, as the clerk indicated, this is our joint agreement with the county. It's, uh, for our, uh, capital improvement sales tax projects. Right now, we've only included two projects in the agreement, which are Frog Hollow, the road and bridge reconstruction, and an intersection improvement at Dunkland and Lafayette. Agreement kind of goes through the various steps of the project and, uh, indicates which entity would be responsible for, uh, those steps. And in this time around, this is a new sales tax, which is a little different than the last one. Uh, the county is actually going to, uh, uh, do some of the, uh, engineering on some of these and, uh, be responsible for that as well as some of the inspection on some of the projects. So, uh, we're getting a little more help on those from them and we appreciate that. Uh, there'll be some more agreements similar to this to come as we develop the next projects in the sales tax. And, uh, basically, uh, it's just indicating money for, uh, that's already either in the budget or would be budgeted in 2014. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions on, uh, 2013 dash six for Mr. Matt? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to, uh, first reading of 2013 dash seven.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Cole County to provide New World Systems software support.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Drew.
Uh, we utilize the New World software for, uh, mobile devices, corrections, records, a number of things. Cole County Sheriff is also on the same system. Uh, they've had some concerns about being able to get technical support, uh, in order, as an inducement, to keep them on New World because it would be very, very difficult for us i- if they went off of it. We've agreed to provide that tech support. They would pay us $28,678 and that would increase, uh, per year and that would increase, uh, by 3% each year. Uh, Mr. Betts believes that we can provide that without a loss of, of, uh, too much sport on our, too much time on our hands. Uh, it's good for us and good for the county.
Any questions on, uh, 2013 dash seven? Bob?
Uh, Drew, is there any provision, uh, I, I realize this is kind of uncharted territory. The first year you go into it, I don't know how you can really know exactly what your cost in time and everything's going to be. Is there any provision for making adjustments to that? Is that an annual agreement or?
It, it is an annual agreement. Uh, so in theory, it's with 120-day cancellation clause. So presumably Bill will keep track, uh, on a case management, uh, type of account and see if we can do this, do this efficiently. I'll say that, uh, you know, the biggest, probably our, the biggest thing we get out of this is they don't change, uh, New World because at that point we'll have to use duplicative systems. Oh, and I guess I should answer, you'd asked me about if this provided any hardware. This is just technical support. You asked that at the pre-meeting.
And response time, what, uh, what kind of a standard are we being held to as far as response time?
Uh, to provide service to the county.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I suspect it will depend on the severity of the emergency. You know, Mr. Betts will need to monitor that. Lisa Shulins back there, she can probably, can you answer that better than I did or not?
Um, an emergency response, um, would be just like we do today with the police department. Um, the majority of the emergencies for the county are the emergencies for our police department. Um, I would say within 24 hours for non-emergency.
And have we found the system to be pretty reliable as far as our, uh, our police department? Uh, do we, do we have a lot of, quote, emergencies or a lot of issues? Hopefully not?
If I could, if I could weigh into that, because I've got into this negotiation a little earlier on, the, the primary problem that the county has had is training and most of what we'd be providing would be training. Um, they have, uh, in the jail, as you might understand, uh, some turnover and, uh, they need somebody to retrain people in the software all the time. And so, a lot of this function would just be, as new jailers come in, teaching them how to use the software. Uh, so what they, what Mr. Bet, uh, Mr. Hilpert was alluding to was, they were looking towards switching to an alternative system that was, had a little lower learning curve. It's not as good, well, I don't wanna say it's not as good. It, it had a lower learning curve in the system. And they thought that that would be easier for them. And instead, uh, we'd rather keep them on the same software that we're on, uh, and just help them, assist them with the training.
I think we're happy with the software, although every software could be a little more user-friendly and, and better.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for, uh, 2013, uh, dash seven? Seeing, uh, none, we'll move on to first reading of 2013 dash eight.